All right, so it is September twenty fourth, it is past seven fifty or seven P M. My name is Paul Tagley Farrier, I'm the Chair of the North Burleson Board of Appeals. This open meeting of the North Burleson Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three. Relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the North Burleson Board of Appeals are allowed to participate either in person or remotely. The Act allows North Burleson Board of Appeals to meet in person and remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along. With the deliberations of the meeting, the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to North Borough Remote Meetings. On YouTube via the link listed on the agenda, ensuring public access does not ensure public participation. Unless such participation is required by law, this meeting will feature public comments. So just making a note that the board had. Or is just coming out of Executive Set in which we're in starting at around six thirty P M. And first on the agenda is. Is a consideration of the petition for easing for dimensional variance for insufficient area frontage for conversion of a limited mixed-use building. To two-family use on the property located at sixty-seven Main Street, map sixty-three parcel ninety-three. In the Main Street Residential District, Zoning District and Groundwater Overlay District, Area Three. All right. Is that? Floor is yours.
Yeah. Yeah, so those are probably helping me to. Because my evening is not that true enough, so I'm just hopefully there you're not totally understanding.
Okay. Yep.
After another half pretty well. For a fact.
Yeah.
So basically she's looking for a variance, make it a two-family, it's like a mixed-use, it's currently I think to hold a commercial upstairs. It's just very difficult for her to find any kind of commercial tenant in such a small space above. And she's proving a parking in the water, standing at the garage. Breaking the land level and doing five spots right into the bottom line.
Okay, and so what's in front of us today is a variance or plus for a variance for with regards to the size of the lot. So in order for a multifamily to exist in the Main Street Residential Zone, you need twenty-five thousand square feet. I believe the current square footage of the is sixty-four fifty, right? So that is looking for approximately. Eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty square feet of relief for the minimum lot size. So this application, if it's approved, we'll go to the planning board for a site plan review. Some more detailed engineering and schematics would be required at that meeting. Yep, so this meeting or this. Application for what's in front of us today is really just on the the variance for the lot size. So if you can kind of just give us a, you know. I guess my first question is, in your application, you know, the size of the building is not being extended in any way.
Exactly the way it is.
Okay, and then in terms of, do you know what the impervious surface calculation will be? For like how much impervious surface is there currently versus? What will be the sort of ending impervious surface from? Once that the driveway is put in?
We want my home, we have the front, I think we're on. The driveway, so much driveway we don't have. I can show you the picture.
Okay.
So a garage, a garage, how, how, how long? I don't know, a garage here. How deep, I don't know, and the top of the garage and there will be thirty-six, thirty. Thirty-six long, thirty-six long and the glass garage long and why the issue? Why there is thirty. Thirty-six, thirty-six.
Yes, thirty feet, thirty feet wide. And thirty-six feet long. And then there's this turnaround area that's twelve by eighty.
And then I guess next is is this property on Town Sewer? Yes, okay. How many bedrooms are? Each are gonna be three bedrooms? Okay.
Yeah, I know the owner's previous, almost three years, I cannot rent out, I cannot just sell sold. So last year we put out the marketing, almost five months. And all they complained they will have a narrow parking space, only two garage. Two-car garage and also garage. The car is very, very narrow and so I could already hate my. My C R V, C R V and then broken my, my mirror, very narrow and so.
Okay, and so the five parking spaces. You actually need four, but you're putting in. Two spaces per unit with two or more bedrooms plus ten percent additional, so five is actually the minimum amount needed. Does anyone on the board have any questions? At this particular time? For the applicant?
Are you changing, so you're not installing a porch on the backside of the building? But not adding anything. And so the entrance points for the building again, instead of the one on the side for the long floor, and then where's the one to the top? The executive desk? Yeah, second year, this is where they leave their door on the backside, okay?
We didn't change any structure.
Let's say I didn't go in, the second address.
How big is the retaining wall, right? Because the property sort of from, if you're looking at it from sort of east to west. So there's like a grading issue there and the parking is going to be on a different level, right? From where the actual house elevation is.
The eight feet tall and the partial, I think, one feet underground, so seven feet above ground. And thirty-six.
They're removing the wall we built in front of the garage area.
Okay, where the garage is currently, right? There's going all the way back and there will be an eight-foot, eight-foot-high wall that sort of runs along.
And currently we have, we have a wall and close building twelve feet and we move to six feet, build the new wall. And eight feet high, thirty, thirty-six feet long.
So do you know how many? Like how many, how many feet? When you're looking at say parking spot number five, do you know how many feet it is from like the edge of parking space number five until the edge of the property? It looks like it's just a couple of feet, is that accurate?
Uh, just the wall, right, to the wall, I mean.
Yeah, I think it's like this parking space.
Right, right.
Sound blocks a lot line.
Yeah.
It's tiny, we need that.
Yeah. That's why. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um. Hey, it's Laura, do you have any comments in terms of from a town staff perspectives?
Well, I, I, I sent you an email with a whole long list of information that needs to be submitted. With your site plan application to the planning board, did you receive that?
It's a few days ago.
Yes, a few days ago, a long list.
Right, right, I will send it to my engineer.
Yes, yes, because there, there was not in enough information on these plans for me to understand. The, how this parking lot is going to be constructed. So we need quite a bit more information. So that we can understand that and there is also a requirement because you're in the groundwater protection overlay district. So there's a requirement to deal with. The runoff from this parking lot or from the roof, you know, one or the other to decrease the amount of water running into the street.
Yeah, yeah, you see that time you talk to me there.
Yes.
And also before, before we talked and you were coming and for a plan. For plan meeting, right?
Yes.
And for that's changed, that's changed and I already told you engineer to. Based on the new, new road and also and probably he will come contact you. He will come, come in here.
Okay, very good, yes.
Okay. Um. Does anyone have?
Why are we looking at just the square foot of the property? For variance?
So, so it's a pre-existing non-conforming because it was, yes, the property itself was created in nineteen hundred as well as the building.
Correct.
So the only thing that is changing that is the reason why a variance is needed. Is the square footage for a two-family structure, so. So for any other use in this district, the minimum lot size requirement is fifteen thousand square feet. However, for a two-family structure, the minimum lot size is twenty-five thousand square feet. That's the only dimensional requirement that changes from. The prior zoning to the new reviews. So that's the variance that they need. Because the building itself is not changing.
I guess is your question more of like, why is the zoning board of appeals not doing site plan review?
Well, I'm concerned, as you were about the impervious surface and the runoff, that was my first thing.
Yeah.
And.
I understand.
Which goes to. You know, the, the property of the site, not the building, the building is pre-existing non-conforming, you're not changing that. We're not looking at the setbacks, we're not looking at the frontage, we're not looking at, which none of those meet the per by law either.
So the planning board is the permitting authority for the special permit use of a two-family as well as site plan approval. So the, the Z B A is only looking at the variance. And then the permitting authority for the rest is the planning board. So they're gonna be looking at. All of those issues.
Almost. It's a change of views, but the structure we remain the same. So they're still looking at the property as it's, that's why I guess that's where I'm getting on about this. This structure hasn't changed. They are changing the topography.
It's because they don't have twenty-five thousand.
Relief of that.
That would enable them to go to the planning boards for a site plan approval.
So they need a variance. They need a use variance.
So the planning board cannot approve a project with a zoning violation. So the planning board cannot issue special permit for a two-family. Because she doesn't have twenty-five thousand square feet.
She doesn't have to beat the setbacks either. Are you saying it doesn't secondly the commercial space? That's a different distinct use, a change in the use. The setback for the current use is the same as the setback for the new use, so there's no change in the non-conforming. We're questioning, I'm just trying to get my hands on this, I'm new to this whole thing. We're looking at the dimensional of the lot. Which isn't changing. But the setbacks aren't changing. The frontage aren't changing, why are we looking at those also?
So the.
Because the structure is pre-existing non-conforming.
So the, the minimum lot size for the current use. And all other uses in this particular district is fifteen thousand square feet. But she wants to go from a limited mixed-use structure to a two-family structure. So that is the only use that has an increase in the minimum lot size. So if she were going.
Changes from.
Yep.
Exactly, so if you were going from a limited mixed-use building to a commercial building, no issue. She doesn't have to come here for variance, it's only because she wants to go to a two-family which has a larger lot size requirement.
Yeah.
That's the only reason why she's here.
Thank you.
And the frontage on, on both of those is a hundred square feet, so it's already existing, the building is not changing, but yeah.
Still getting used to the.
Yeah.
Something by law, so.
Yeah, and, and to your point, Jack, I mean, you know, my concerns are obviously with the sort of some of the. Missing data in terms of impervious surface calculations, sort of figuring out how that, you know, the nine-foot retaining wall that's going to be there, a lot of the site, the groundwater. Right, where's, what's gonna happen with runoff, it seems like the driveway is very close to the lot lines, like in terms of the building process, like, but that's all.
That's actually going from here to planning.
Yeah.
Correct.
Planning is gonna look at all that anyway.
Correct, yes, okay, yeah, so we can ask questions, forget it, give it a shot, but I think it definitely would behoove the applicant to come up with all those answers that Lori had provided. To the planning board because. Yeah, all right. Okay, is that? Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other? Questions with regards, Brad, do you?
Yeah.
Have you been able to hear everything so far?
Yes, yep. Everything sounds good, yeah, my only question or my concern is that fifth parking spot. Parking spot four and then the parking spot five seems a little tight and we don't want people backing on Route twenty. But I don't know how parking spot four maybe gonna be able to get out of that spot and be able to. Turn around and not back out on Route twenty.
Yeah, there is a problem there, he brings up a very good point, and I noticed this as well. If you have a car parked in parking space number five, then. The, a car parked in parking space number four isn't going to be able to back up. They're not gonna be able to turn around in parking space number five. So that's gonna be a problem and then if somebody's in parking space number five and. There's somebody in all the other parking spaces, then they're gonna have to back all the way up. Onto. The Route twenty, which is very dangerous, so.
Not too much time and five cars same time party there, right?
I, I think you're gonna have to find another configuration for that extra parking space. So that you're still gonna be able to back up and turn around when you're leaving those, when all of the spaces are full. But that's a conversation we can have with the engineer.
So just see like if a second floor and make two. Two-bedroom, not a three-bedroom, this do need a request of five parking?
Yeah.
I believe if you have.
It's two, it's two parking spaces.
Bedroom.
Oh, yeah, one bedroom.
You can do one and a half parking spaces. So then you would only need four.
So I think two bedrooms, two parking spaces, yeah, percent, because of the visitor space.
Oh, so go get. So you would bag the yard?
Yeah, you're gonna have to find another location for a parking space. This is, this is great for turnaround, but it's just too tight.
For too tight for, for number five or?
There's a parking car, there's a car here. This car can't back into it and pull out, they don't want them backing out and playing.
Yeah.
So they wanna have a different spot with number five, you, here or something, I don't know.
So can you?
The engineer might want maybe different.
See, this is two, two garage, can we use the one, one side? This is two garage to take out, right, so still have this space, so if this are coming. Just parking this way, parking one side and another people and use for five floor. And so this is and. Garage, garage to take, right, so one life and for waste. And if I have a waste, I believe.
I think you're probably gonna have to create a parking space here with a little area to turn around. So that this will be free for turning around for this parking space.
How can I turn?
The backup.
You mean the backup?
So like the difference in like, it's a photography of where that porch is and like where the parking space is, is like almost six feet. So there's like a drop off there, but I mean, it's, it's definitely. I mean, I'll just. It's very, very tight property, obviously. You know, and I think from various perspective. You know, given that it's downtown and downtown is kind of where dense, dense, more dense. Property is. You know, I, I do think that the site plan does need to get reconfigured and re-engineered and there's a lot of open questions. So. I mean, I guess. You know. Would happy to hear the board's input on, you know, you know, obviously there's only so much like we can. You know, because the site plan is going in front of the planning board and they're the ones that are really responsible for answering all that questions, you know, we can obviously put. You know, if we approve this application, can put conditions on, it needs to get site plan approved by planning board and they'll go through all the necessary steps. So I'm happy to hear what, or if you want to wait for that information, we can do that as well, so.
I feel like with the bedroom plan, we're kind of tied to. The parking spots. And being that we don't. I don't really understand the photography of the driveway. With the pictures and then. I mean, I wish we could take a field trip. Over right now just to see because I can't understand the pictures and I was here today and I should have popped over. And I was thinking about it when you were like, it's right next door earlier and I was like, should I? And I'm like, no, I'm not gonna pop over, I was like, I'm in time crunch, but. So it is hard because even if we took away one, if we took away one bedroom, you would still need the five spots, correct? And then, so it doesn't even matter if you took away the one bedroom, so I feel like approving this. But with the photography, we still, you don't, we, you need that approval. Or you need the design. By an expert for the driveway. So I don't know how I would be able to vote on this without, yeah. Or I could, I don't know, is it a chicken without, and what comes first, the chicken or the egg in my head right now, I need more. Discussion, I guess, or to hear from.
Yeah, I mean, I think from like, what I would say is from a, from a high level, right? The ask is. I have a lot. That for a housing unit, whether it's one, two or three bedrooms, requires a variance. Because the minimum lot size is going from fifteen to twenty-five thousand square feet and I only have sixty-five hundred, right? So that's the ask and that's, that's what, that's the question in front of us. And then the answer is, or what's in front of us is, is the information provided by the applicant? Enough for us to be comfortable in making a decision, right?
Right.
Knowing that. The details of a site plan review by the planning board. With a reconfigured parking lot and all that other stuff is still in the balance of. What our decision is, so that, that's, I mean, it's a question. If, if board members feel that they don't have enough information today to make an accurate and appropriate decision, then, you know, we can leave it open and. Come back next month with something. More refined in detail, but those refinements and details. Will ultimately have to come because they will ultimately have to go to the planning board to get any sort of approval, meaning like if we approve this today. They still can't do anything.
Right.
The shorter way to say it. Uh, check it.
Something that would. Help my thinking about the question we have, and I don't even know, I'm not asking the applicant to provide this information, maybe someone on the board knows or maybe Lori knows. I would be, be curious to know. What is the town's purpose in having the twenty-five thousand square foot requirement for? Multifamily versus that's fifteen thousand square foot requirement for the limited mixed use. Because I feel like if I understood better why someone. We, the town effectively one day in our grand wisdom, thought this kind of thing needs ten thousand more square feet, that would help me to be able to even formulate the right questions. To know if we're doing the right thing by the towns and I feel like I'm overlooking the only that.
Well, I can tell you that that change was recently approved. So that's.
An increase or decrease?
To increase the minimum lot size of duplexes, I, I think, let's see. That was done in two thousand twenty-one.
Fairly recently, yeah, and you know what it was before?
Um. Well, of course, this is before my time, so I'm just, you know, I worked with the Design Review Committee on the duplex design standards. Which were just passed by the planning board, I think, maybe two years ago. And when we were talking about those, they said that. There was a lot of concern a few years ago because duplexes were getting so large. And they seem to be out of scale with the character of. Single-family neighborhoods that they were going in. So I believe based on that discussion, that the idea was because the duplexes were getting so large. Then the land area to support those duplexes needed to be larger. So, of course, this is a, a two-family that was built in nineteen hundred. So it's not large, you know, it's, it's.
It's a conversion, which I think is like. Sort of. What the goal of sort of downtown master plan, you know. The preference is converting larger houses into multifamily, that's, that's the, the process, rather than. Tearing something down and building whole thing, which I think is a good thing in this, in this case, right? I think what needs probably a little bit more sharper pencil is, how do these five parking spaces fit, right? What is the groundwater implications? You know, how does, you know. This, this nine-foot wall, like what does that actually look and feel like, you know, better sort of elevation views would be good. But, like I said, I mean. My personal opinion is that, you know, in terms of like needing the size, I can see myself getting there, but. I would also say that there's a lot of information that's not in this application currently. That typically, you know, again, gets pointed to site plan, but. However, you guys want to proceed is, is fine with me. Meaning we can either make a decision today or.
Or continue.
Continue, yep.
Yeah, well, I appreciate, so given what information our planner gave us, that does help me a little bit. With the question I was having, in the sense that it seems, at least. In my mind at this moment, that the reason for the. Twenty-five thousand instead of the fifteen thousand, which in some technical way is what triggered our needing to be involved. Otherwise, it would have been the same as the previous non-conforming use and therefore not needing, just like the frontage being a hundred versus a hundred, we don't need to say anything about the frontage. Because the requirement didn't change for the different use. But if the reason that the town has for the difference in square footage relates to a problem that isn't really present in this lot and property anyway, then I'm a little more comfortable. With it, that being said. Lot and property anyway, then I'm a little more comfortable um with it. That being said, um. Yeah, I'm a little bit on the fence on the question of, do I need a little more time to mull it over and make sure we're thinking about the right things? In terms of what the ZBA needs to do, you know, so I'm half and half. Whether to continue just to give us a little more time to digest or uh make a decision today.
And I think, uh, I would, what I would say to that is, um, I agree with that, I mean. If more information leads you to getting to a yes, you're gonna have, the applicants gonna have to present that work to us or to someone else, right? Um, so. Yeah. Um, sorry, Brad, Brad, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, um, I personally would like to see some more information uh before making a decision. Um, if everyone else in the room just wants to make the decision tonight, I'm not gonna hold it up, but. Um, I think, cause this is a tight lot and they're asking for a lot of relief, I would like to see more details around the parking, the impervious coverage and things like that. And if they do have to get it together for the planning board, I'd like to see it beforehand, cause that's the first gate, uh gateway through the process.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Uh, John.
Lori, question, uh, we would have to though pine on the groundwater overlay, right?
No, because there was a change at town meeting this past um, this past spring. That said that if you're in the groundwater protection overlay district, then there is no longer a special permit requirement, so now. Staff is going to ensure compliance with that, so that's information that will have to be submitted. Um, with your additional um filing to the planning board. But the building is, uh inspector is gonna ensure compliance. It's not a separate special permit. Um, but I'm sure, like, I'm going to be interested in seeing this compliance, so that's what I was talking about. When I said that you have to. Um, you can't let that storm water run down into Route twenty, you have to. Deal with it on your site, you have to infiltrate it into the ground. That's because of the groundwater protection overlay.
This part of job who, who should the, uh, do it?
The engineer has to design a solution. So whether, you know, he's gonna infiltrate is the roof runoff or whether he's gonna infiltrate the driveway runoff, but. He has to do something.
Yeah, Jacob.
I, I find it's a tough spot for a commercial enterprise. Um, I think it's better as a residential. So to give them relief of the footage required. We're, we're, we're just sending them to the planning board. The planning board is gonna look at everything that we're asking for. It's not about curving for the most part, so as far as I'm concerned. Um, if we grant them the leaf and they don't get their permit, nothing changes. So I have no problem with this was the fastest board.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, but like I said, my biggest issues with this is the stuff that's missing and the stuff that the planning board will cover. You know, in terms of. You know, the, you know. The open issues, um, I, I agree, like, I mean, in terms of, you know, going from a. Commercial to a residential, you know, dense housing belongs downtown. Um, it's a conversion, which is the preferred method for increasing the density of, of a property. Um, it is an extremely tiny lot, so there are, there's a lot of things on the engineering side that needs to be sort of um. Uh, addressed, and I hope that that's the feedback that the applicant takes, but. If it was up to me, I, I, I'm comfortable with making a decision tonight, but we can lead up to the rest of the board, I don't know. John or Jacob.
Uh, is this conversation allowed with the applicant in the room?
Uh, well, well, so if you guys are, I guess, sorry, I guess the question is, is that. Are you guys comfortable making a decision tonight if we close the case, right? Cause our decision right now. At, at the present is. We can close the public hearing and then we can deliberate. Right? Or we can continue the public hearing. Right? And the applicant can go back and sort of get some of the information that we've sort of discussed here. Whether or not it's directly related to the variance at hand, um, is a different question. But then they will come back, give the information, then we can close the case and see from there. So.
Yeah, with the matter at hand that we have to uh opine on.
Okay.
And this is a public meeting, so the applicant has the right to stay in the room.
Uh, so I guess. The only other thing is this, this is a public meeting. Um, and. I do not see anyone for public comment. Brad, do you see anyone else?
No, there, there have not been any attendees during this hearing.
Yeah. Okay, so I, I guess, Brad, um, what are your thoughts on? Uh, closing the case and making a decision tonight?
Yeah, that's a consensus in the room. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Jacob and Suzie.
I wanted to hear Suzie's thought.
As I said, it was like the chicken and the egg. So if we are. If the parking lot has to go to the planning board anyway, and this. And Lori, you, you were okay with the drawing to in the scale, I know.
Yeah, I mean, I, um. That drawing with the other drawing and I used them side by side to understand what was going on. Um, but I, I thought in the other drawing that was made by the professional, uh, that it was scaled. So I, um, had a easier time understanding the size of the unit.
And Bob was okay, there was no questions from Bob either. I know we didn't.
Submit any comments.
Then I'm okay with making a vote tonight. I agree with, I, I mean, she looked forever for it for this, so.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, yeah, I think I'm. Being a person on the fence with four people who aren't on the fence, so I'm happy to go on to a vote. My question, I guess, that I'm still struggling with is. I'm trying to ask myself. What is the standard out of our bylaws or the MGLs that I'm applying to the question of? Should we grant this variance? And I'm coming up a little bit empty about that. Um, uh, conceptually, I'm comfortable with the idea that. Ultimately, the town should get protection through the process with the planning board. Uh, and that gives me comfort. And I agree with the comments that were made about, uh, particularly this uh proposal being consistent with, I think, master plan in general. Um, with respect to downtown, I think that's true, but I don't know if that's one of my relevant questions in, in deciding this particular variance, and so. Um, to me, I see that for some reason, uh, we had a fifteen thousand square foot requirement. Uh, it's based on the change in use, it's going to a twenty-five square foot requirement. And, um, you know, whether you look at it as a variance of eighteen thousand five hundred fifty square feet. Uh, or simply just the difference of the current non-conforming use and the new non-conforming use of ten thousand square feet, I still. I'm struggling to find what's the standard. On which I'm making a decision, and that's my comment, but I'm happy to do my best.
I believe, uh, so what she's claiming is a hardship. Um, doing, uh, owing to the small oddly shaped and steeply sloped nature of the lot. So it's um the size of a lot. The soil conditions and the topography.
I won't, I won't stop us from going to a decision.
Okay. Um, so I give the applicant, uh, a last chance to comment, um, or if you have anything else to add. To sort of our, our discussion here.
Anything bad? Basically, the planning board is gonna have to decide anyway. They, they direct you to variants, you still gotta get everything, their planning board. But they can make a decision now, see what they, they're gonna pass you to the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, so finally, and the. Planning board to.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I would say is. You know, th- there's. A lot of work to be done before your next. You know, if this does pass today, um. There's a good amount of work now would. Need your, whatever Lori's advice is on. Getting all the engineering schematics, uh, and all the relevant documentations with regards to groundwater infiltration systems. Um, because these are all things that if we had site plan review, we'd be asking for before being able to make a decision, so. Yeah. Okay, um, anyone said any other comments? Uh, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Yep.
Uh, sharing a motion to close the public hearing. For the consideration of the petition of the designers, uh, variance, uh, closing.
Public hearing.
Your seven deliberate.
Yeah, 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 so close.
Closing the meeting to public comments.
Yep, yeah, so no more new information from that point, then we go into a deliberation phase and then. Yeah, that's why I was like, if we're gonna keep it open, we wouldn't close it, we would just continue. Uh, so I believe John made a motion to close the public hearing. Brad seconded. Um, we'll just do a unanimous vote. All those in favor, Brad, Brad raised his hand as well. Um, so the public meeting is closed. Cool, thank you. We'll have a decision shortly. Alright.
Are we deliberating?
Yeah, you, you can say if you want, but we just can't really, like, we don't talk to them, right? Some people say, some people don't, but. No, it's fine. You can watch, you can watch it on YouTube anyway. Um, yeah, man, I guess just, I've already said this before, but you know, I think that. Given what, what was in front of us today, given the, the lack of size in the property, uh, the ability to sort of add to the, the property, um. You know, i- it's a conversion, which i- in, in my opinion, i- is a much more preferred sort of. Transition to a multi-family, more densely. Uh configured um use. Um, i- is an appropriate use, it's in the main street residential, it's on Route twenty. Um, I think the parking configuration is. Four, um, it needs to be redone, but. I think given what is. We, is being asked of us today.
Hey, Paul, sorry to cut you off. I lost uh audio in there. I can barely hear you.
Oh, sorry, Brad, can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
No, okay.
Thank you, sorry to cut you off.
That was a great speech, you should have heard it. Um, yeah, so I mean, I guess, given all of that, uh, I, I think it's, I think it's appropriate to approve it, uh, obviously with the condition that. They still need to go in front of the planning board, go in for a site plan review and answer all the sort of questions that we had. Waiting, so. Anyone else have any other comments? Yep, Suzie.
I agree, um, she looked for a while for a new tenant, um, a, a professional tenant and couldn't find one, so the natural. The natural next step was to convert it, so. I, and she wasn't making any changes to the building either, so, um. I, I am in favor of this. And we don't have any say over the driveway, so. Sending that to the planning board.
Correct. John.
Yeah, I mean, going through it from the variance perspective, he's still trying to explain the hardship, the shape of topography, obviously, I think is there. Um, just the overall, the hardship, the reasonable use of a property, I think that's showing a hard, um. Show the detriment, I, and then obviously, I wouldn't consider any detriment to the public goodness case either, so.
Now, I guess, well, I'll re- reiterate too, that the building is not getting any bigger, so it's not like it's, it's changing in any way that would cause a change in. You know. The density of the lot, but. Jacob, do you have any? Or, or Brad, but.
Let's go Brad first, if he.
Brad, you have any, uh?
Uh, no, no additional comments, um, I, I think, but I mean. I think it's a good use of the space, uh, this is where, um, multifamily high dense housing belongs is in downtown. Um, just, you know, like you said, just the list of conditions that Lori, uh, listed out, uh, needing to be addressed, but. For us, what we're deciding on is just the, the lot size itself, so, um, I definitely agree that, um. She made a case for a hardship. But I'm in favor of this project.
Okay, thanks, Brad.
Yeah, I won't read the, any of the comments that were made, um, I don't disagree with any of the comments that were made, the, the one thing that I would add. Is, um, I don't think that the. Change in use, uh, is any worse for the town in the sense of, um. Although there is a different square footage requirement for the new use, I don't think that the reasons for it. Um, are very applicable to this unique, um, site and therefore aren't. In my mind, a reason to say that, uh, the, the change is worse for the town, and because of that, I. I think that it's not any worse for the town and may be better for the town, um. I don't know if I'm wise enough to say that it's better for the town, but, uh, it's not worse for the town, I'm prepared to say. And, um, willing to support it for that.
Okay. Jacob, you have any? So, uh, I guess, condition obviously is based on a select board approval, right? Sorry, um. Is there a motion to approve? Unless anyone has any other comments, but. Uh, I think there is a, sorry. Please, please, for this motion, yep, uh, so motion, uh. Motion to grant the variance of eighteen thousand five hundred fifty square feet from the twenty-five thousand. Square foot minimum lot size required by zoning by law section seven dash oh six oh three oh J. Section five, densing dimensional regulations, supplemental regulations, Main Street Residential District. To allow the lot area of the subject site, six thousand four hundred and fifty square feet, for the development of a two-family. Welling on properly located sixty-seven Main Street. Map sixty-three parcel ninety-three, subject to findings of facts, one to thirteen in condition A. Yes.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Do we need to so move? So, and then.
Brad seconded.
Brad seconded?
Yep.
So Suzie, so move the motion and Brad seconded the motion, uh, all those in favor? Uh, I, Brad?
I, yep, I.
Yep, noting that you are an I as well, so it's a unanimous decision. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, uh, so next up on the agenda is a consideration of a minute.
It was already ended. Uh, um, before you guys made the motion to. Yeah.
But the hearing is just a window here, remember the testing one, we're in, we're just discussing.
Yeah, so I think the process we've always done is you open the public meeting or public hearing. Then you can continue it or you can close the public hearing.
What's the public comment?
Comment, yeah, public hearing or comment.
The hearing is the whole hearing, uh, including the motion.
We're in the meeting. But that's the, the public hearing. The period where comments are accepted. And then they close the public hearing, no more comment, so you're still in the meeting. So you're still in the public meeting, but you're no longer in the public hearing. That's the distinction.
Um, yeah, so I mean, I think like what we've.
The other thing I think we should explain to people what happens afterwards, you know, technically, you have fourteen days to render a decision. And they still have to wait twenty-one days to get the sign, to get the, uh, the senior president's clerk. To register, the worst county registry, so I think they, they don't know what's going on when they leave here. I think we should make that part of information to them.
That's a good idea. I know that the decision letter has that information, but they don't necessarily know that that information is forthcoming in the decision letter.
She didn't, she got an email and she didn't look at it. Was, uh, you know, irrelevant.
Yeah. Sorry.
Sorry, I did press.
No, no, it's alright. But I, I guess what I was gonna say is the, you know, typically it's. You open the public comment, close the public comment, and then once you close the public comment, you can deliberate for however long, right? Um, but there's no new information that can enter from that point on, so that's why it's either. You can, if, if people are unsure, it's better to just leave it open, the public comment period open. Um, and then you go.
A few years ago, it seems like, if I recall, there was one that. Whether it was continued or not, I remember watching that.
Yeah, 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 but it's, it, but then like, once you close the public comment. Then it's, you know, in order to reopen, that it needs to be. Renos and, and that whole thing, but then it's also, are you expecting more information or new information? But then once a decision is rendered, right, then you have fourteen days to actually file it, right? It's fourteen days to file it. Right, which is why I've, I've asked and Lori has provided sort of the draft. Decisions that at least have something to look at if we are going to make a decision. Um, it, it was my request as a chair to have something on paper before we actually make a decision, it by no means. Is a way to skew a vote one way or the other, and I just wanna make it clear that. If anyone has any sort of reservations about making a decision, I'm fine with pointing it to another meeting, so. Um, but, next up on the agenda is the consideration of minutes from the August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four meeting, um, has everyone had a chance to? View the, or read the minutes and provide any comments to, um, Lori? If not, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting.
Mr. Chair, um, I'm reading that we, um. What do we do with new, we approve, there we go, the approved meeting minutes from our August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Okay.
As big one in both.
Yeah.
The second.
All right, so Jacob, uh, made a motion to approve the minutes and Suzie seconded, uh, all those in favor? Uh, unanimous, Brad, Mike, he's raising his hand as well. Um, so next upon the agenda, it would be just our next two meetings, October twenty-second and November twenty-sixth.
We don't have any applications for October. We do not, although, um, so. You folks may recall that I had mentioned the economic development forum. Um, so that would be with the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board and the zoning Board of Appeals, um. So we did receive a scope, uh, from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Um, so they provided, um, uh. I, I think, uh, a very good scope of work. Uh, it included reaching out to the various board and committee members in advance. Uh, with a survey and then possibly doing, uh, some follow-up interviews. Um, so I'd be happy to email that to you folks tomorrow. Uh, I did share it with the MPIC, the Master Plan Implementation Committee first at their meeting on Thursday night. Um, because it was their idea to have this economic development forum to begin with. Um, and they liked the scope of work, um. So, right now, the next step in the process is to reach out to our CMR PC delegate, which is, uh, Carrie Martin. Um, and see if she approves the scope of work and she will authorize the use of, um. They're called LPA hours, um, so as part of our membership in the central. Um, regional planning commission, uh, were allowed a certain amount of technical assistance per year. Um, it's included within the price of our membership. So we would use twenty-four hours of that as well as, uh, supplemental hours that they have available. Um, through their regional economic development policy, um, planning process. So there would be no cost to the town, so, uh, excited about it. We have to figure out a date that'll work for all three, um, boards, uh, which may be a bit of a challenge. Um, so. I have, uh, reached out to them, some of the dates that we were kicking around were, um. One of the planning board meeting dates in November, um, and I think it was. I think it was the third. Uh, meeting, uh, third, uh, Tuesday in November. And then we were also thinking about maybe the third Thursday in November. Um, so I gave those to CMR PC, they're getting back to me. If those dates don't work, we'll pick other dates, but anyway, the long and short of it is, I'm gonna send you guys an email with potential dates, so if you could get back to me. Um, whether those dates work for you, that would be.
And so the meeting will be planning, select board?
It'll be planning, select board and, uh, ZBA.
Okay, all members.
So it'll be all members hopefully.
Yep.
And, uh, there will be some members of the MPIC, uh, to kinda. Facilitate the conversation a little bit, but for the most part, it'll be facilitated by C- CMR PC.
Okay. Cool.
All right, that's it.
Thanks, Lori.
Anyone have any other? Nothing? Suzie?
I, well, there's a, we're, we're having a, a jack-o'-lantern stall. And it's gonna be in the town common on October twenty-fifth, Community Affairs Committee, so details coming. But I'll share it with you.
All right.
That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Um, they, no one else anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Just like.
All right.
Eight eleven.
Suzie made a motion and John seconded, all those in favor? Hi, Brad?
I, I.
Make sure you wear suntans, sunscreen, all right?
Yes, right.
See you, Brad.
All right, have a good night, everybody, thank you.
Bye, Brad, hates.